Okay, let me see. Pursuit to the open meeting law. Any person that make an audio or video recording this public meeting may transmit the meeting throughout the media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recording and transmission are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and deemed knowledgeable and permissible. Go call.
Counselor Stephen Camaro. Counselor Kilby.
Here.
Chairman Pelletier.
Yeah. Anybody here for input? Citizen input? Okay. We need a motion in the minutes of meeting.
Motion to adopt minutes.
Second.
May fourteenth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number three. Communication appropriation one hundred and sixty thousand of the Morton Middle enacted fund to the Maplewood Park Acquisition Capital Fund. Refer it two five nineteen. I'll take all of these and leave to withdraw. What's your...
Well, you want to have a quick discussion?
Well, yeah. Go ahead.
Mr. Verissimo.
It's pretty cut and dry. And your name for the record, young lady?
Kathy Ann Viveros, City Administrator. So, Counselors, I'm assuming that this might be before you, simply for ultimate leave to withdraw. This was the matter whereby the city had an opportunity, had received an offer to sell from People Incorporated regarding the two lots that were available at Maplewood Park. And at the time, the council was interested in negotiating the price. They had made an offer to allow us to purchase at a given price point, and the council felt that there needed to be some negotiation. We subsequently received a letter back from People Incorporated indicating that they were holding firm to the price that was before them and that they were going to proceed to sell to an alternate buyer.
That's the one question they had is whether we got a reply from the letter we sent asking for a pilot donation. So, they got back to us on that?
The next day.
No, actually, Counsel, I don't recall that we got. I can check. I don't know if Corporation Counsel received anything regarding a pilot. I don't believe so.
It's been a while, so non-response is...
Right, exactly, Counsel, yes. But the idea was, I think, you're right, you did bring up the issue of the pilot, but they were of the impression that they needed to proceed to sell it to an alternate purchaser, so...
Motion leave to withdraw.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
We have... well, Steve Camaro's not here. The judge has got to leave for five... well, we'll take number four, anyway. Communication, city resident requesting to purchase a parcel of city-owned land. Refer three nineteen. Nineteen. So, come on now.
And Mr. Sullivan is also here. And Corporation Counsel.
If you could start first with your name and address.
My present address, Joseph Valcourt, fifteen Daniel Drive, Westport. We will be moving to sixty-six Lake Avenue when the contractors are done.
Okay.
I'm his wife.
Your name?
Patricia Valcourt.
Okay, still got to give your name.
Okay.
You live in the same place?
Yes, we lived together.
Okay. Mr. Mello?
Ben Mello, City Assessor.
Okay.
Bill Roth, City Planner.
Terry.
Terrence Sullivan, Administrator of Community Utilities.
And you could listen, Mr. Macy. Just to plug you in a little bit, I guess they bought the house up there. There's a piece of land to the left, I guess, that the interest in it and buying it, and I went down and looked at it, I guess it's unacceptable road, whatever the case may be. So, I figured we'd bring it up, see if we could do something one way or the other. And Terry, you got something to say on that piece?
Certainly. That's the low point where the drainage currently heads to for that area, so the sewer department would recommend against selling the paper street or discontinuing it. I anticipate in the future that we're going to need to do a capital program to improve the drainage there. There's already sediment that comes off of the street. There's already been some complaints from the neighbors to the right of their house when we put in the water and sewer and paved the road, and how the asphalt berm had to go to keep the water going to that current low point. You can see the sedimentation. Ultimately, I believe we're going to have to dig all of that out and put in a stormwater pipe at some point in the future.
All right, I went down there, little seconds of mess. Something has to be done there. How do we stand, Mr. Mello, with that piece of land?
Well, all I can say is that they abut the Kirk Street lot that she's talking about, and then you have the Roberts family abuts the south side, the north side of the lot.
Yep.
And as far as I know, it's a paper street.
Yep.
And it's never been accepted, and it's been like an extension of the street from the Tiverton, Rhode Island. It's a plan from the nineteen hundred, early nineteen fourteen or nineteen sixteen or something like that. And I couldn't get the plan because it's in the Tiverton, it's in Tiverton, it's not a Massachusetts plan.
All right. Is there a fence between your land? That street is divided. Half one side, half of the side?
There's only, oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead.
There's only a fence between the Roberts and that empty lot.
But actually, Terry, or anybody can answer this, they both have rights to half of the road?
Pass one on the planning.
Generally, it's an unacceptable paper street, which means that the underlying interest is, goes typically to the center line of the street, to the abutting properties. But since it is on a plan that's recorded, and that, and it is for public purposes, obviously, it could be for access, public access to the water, drainage, and the various things. So, the city does have a right because of the right-of-way there. We just haven't accepted it for maintenance. I reiterate with Mr. Sullivan that, you know, there is going to be the need in the future for a public purpose. We'll probably, we're going to have to, in order to put in the drainage, we will need to accept that in order to expend public funds. So, you know, I would recommend against selling it or having the neighbors take over the interest in the street because there's a public purpose for maintaining that right-of-way.
Mr. Kilby?
In light of what we're hearing from Terry and the planner and the assessor, I would make a motion of leave to withdraw on this one.
I can speak on a motion.
Me, second.
Yeah, second it. And, you know, I'm just wondering, you bought that piece of property?
It was transferred from my mother's trust.
Okay.
It's been in the family since fifty-three. We've maintained that piece of property. We've dug out that drain for sixty-six years.
Yep.
Only this last two years when my mother's gotten so ill that we had to stop. The Roberts people, before Roberts, they put their dock there, an old dock, it blocked the water drainage. It all comes into our yard now. It's undermining everything in my yard. It undermined that. My brother pulled it out of there a few weeks ago. But Mr. Roberts had put piles of dirt against his fence because the water was flushing into his yard, too. But what happened is, all the flushing from the streets is pushing his dirt, it filled the drain, and it's all coming in our yard, and it's collapsing the wall into the water. Now, you don't want to sell us the property, fine, but you're going to have to accept it and fix it because the whole thing's collapsing into the lake.
I did bring something.
And it's dangerous because at the end, there's a little wall, and it's falling in, somebody walks down there, and there's all rocks down there that you're going to get hurt.
Do you feel that the city's responsible for correcting that?
Well, he just said it was.
Yeah.
Well, it's...
They just said, but they'd have to accept it to fix it. But he's saying it's a drain with them, but if it's not an accepted piece of property now, and you don't have to fix it, I have to fix it, so...
With the land, where the water is to the land, all those rocks are falling out now because the land's been all pushed away, and the rocks are starting to fall in.
To Terry, I mean, what can be done there? We have to accept it first?
Well, first, the area has been overdeveloped over the years. We've spent a million dollars in the past three years in that area, providing the availability of water, sewer, and we paved that road through that area. We don't presently have the capital funds to rebuild the drainage, but we have spent over a million dollars. The houses are packed in there, what originally, in my opinion, was supposed to be summer homes. I mean, we're packed in with houses now. The more houses, the more roofs, the more impervious area is, the more water that's coming in. So, it is an issue that needs to be addressed at some point in time. There's been a million dollars put into that area. We currently don't have the funds to expand the drainage area in the immediate future.
Is the water going into the house? No.
What he said earlier about the neighbor complaining, it wasn't the neighbor, it was my brother complaining that the water was coming from his yard on a south side into my mother's yard and flooding the cellar, just pouring in. So, you guys put a berm in there or, you know, a trough so that the water would not go into my mother's front yard, and brought everything down into that drain. Because before that, the water would come down the streets and go to the right of the house in the south, go to the left, you know, be dispersed better. But once they had to put that swale in, all the water goes down into that drain now, and it's overwhelming with the heavy rains.
Do we have a quick fix for that? No?
There's no quick fix. I can have the staff take a look, but there's no quick fix for that. I mean, the rains we had Thursday night, I mean, we had almost two inches of rain, extreme...
Everything washes down on that?
For that particular area where the topography comes for that small area, you can see the, where the water goes.
Yeah.
It's right at that low point. At some point in the future, we are going to have to construct... there's no drain there now. It was just, for lack of a better word, it was a natural pathway because it was a low point. The more things get built up, the more difficult it gets for the water to go through. Ultimately, when we make further improvements in that area, we're going to have to really construct a real drain. If you sell the property, and then we need to go in and put an actual drain because it's still going to be at a low point, then we won't have any rights to put in that drain.
Mr. Mello, how many feet do they have on their side? Is that a forty-foot?
No.
It's not?
No.
I can't read that one.
The assessor's map indicated that it's a fifty-foot right-of-way.
Fifty-foot right-of-way.
Yeah.
I was just looking for Ostrup Park.
Yeah. All right, well, what else could anybody suggest there? Okay, well, I think we should give it leave to withdraw first, like there's a motion on the floor. But I also think that somebody should go there and look at it. You've probably seen it already. I mean, I looked at it, maybe the curb could be a little higher to drain the water a little more to the right, I guess. Is that possible, or what else can be done there? I mean, it can't stay that way.
Anything's possible. I can have my staff take a look at it, but there's no quick magical answer, just putting an additional berm.
It's taken years for that to win away. You know, it's not something that happened recently.
Now, they can... you've been feeding the land up for sixty years? And that's going to continue, is that...
We're going to have to if you guys don't fix it.
Yeah.
You don't sell us the land, and you don't fix it, then it's going to be on my shoulders and it's going to do it.
We maintain it and keep it.
So, Roberts land doesn't get flooded, and my land doesn't get flooded.
All right. I guess they don't want to sell it. They need it, all well and good, but I think something should be done there. A quick fix for now, whatever. I mean, there must be something that can be done. So, I'm hoping you can take a look at it and come up with some solution. Meanwhile, they can utilize the land, right?
Yes.
As long as they don't put a permanent structure there. If they wanted to park your car there, you can park your car there, as long as, as long as you don't put a permanent structure or anything in the way. We see no reason, a lot of people park on these streets. You know, they use the little side parking area. I think we can work with Terry, myself, and the city engineer to see if there's a, you know, a temporary quick fix that might re-establishing and cleaning out, and cleaning, and cleaning the culvert, maybe taking armoring where there's some, when I say armoring, putting some rocks in where it's washing away. That's a very temporary fix that, you know, but you need to know from hearing, you know, talking to Mr. Sullivan, there's a long-term drainage need in a long term that we're going to ultimately have to do. So, it's just, it's time and resources.
Yeah, if they would have put the drain on the ground to begin with, we wouldn't have this problem now, where, when you dug up the streets and put in the water and sewer, you know?
Well, the water and sewer was done in the street. That project was specifically financed through state funding. Drainage was not a part of that particular project. And, yes, we can fix ten thousand things in the city and spend two billion dollars, so you can't just isolate on one particular problem. We're down here, there's multiple drainage problems throughout the city that are expensive and need to be addressed.
All right, I guess what we're looking for tonight is just a little relief for these people. If you can go down, come up with a small solution, as far as using it for parking, he says there's no problem there whatsoever, and...
Can I just say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Only because also the gentleman next door, Mr. Roberts?
Yep.
He utilizes that spot already for himself.
Yours?
Well, it's the city's.
Near his house, where the COVID starts and today.
But he parks two cars there, which is right not far from our door. So, that's why we were looking for...
Well, no, it's supposed to be fifty-fifty, right?
Technically, technically, you would have the right for the first twenty-five feet from your property to the twenty-five, and then he has it.
Yeah.
Obviously, he's clearly been using the entire right-of-way.
He's just a summer resident, you know?
Well, I mean, if you want us to address that, we can do that, too.
He owns a lot right across the street, and he won't park on it.
Well, whatever, it's not right. You got the twenty-five feet, usually be used, not him. I mean, you can tell him if you...
Our concern is the drain, you know?
Yeah, okay.
As far as parking, we've parked there our whole lives, too, so, no, it's really a useless piece of property, you know? Nobody's ever been on it for all the time we've been there, nothing.
But except we need it for the drainage, so that's what...
Clean out the drain, I'd be happy.
Yeah. Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Give leave to withdraw.
You seconded it, right?
You seconded, right?
I think you already seconded.
Yeah. All right, vote, leave to withdraw?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's it.
All right, so you withdraw, so everything stays the same?
Right.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, well, he's going to go look at it.
No, that's fine.
I'm sorry, we'll take you more.
Yeah.
Oh, well...
You want to leave them pictures?
Do you want them?
Yeah, sure, in case it comes up, or whatever.
Well, I thought you'd be going.
Skip to the court.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item number five. Is anybody here with item number five? Mr. Macy, you're all set, man?
Well, let's wait till everybody's here. I do have a five o'clock meeting. I don't know, based on what I think they want to discuss.
Well, first of all, Mr. Macy, the author of this is not here. Steve Camaro, he's the one that put this in, so I don't know where he is tonight. He had some concern about the building, but I'll let you go on.
Well, I think what might be helpful, because I know these folks have, not a different perspective, but I found the old file when the city sold the NV Board in School. And Mayor Flanagan was the mayor. I believe that at one point, when it came to...
Mr. Macy, just for a minute, we jumped ahead. We're going to need the names. My fault.
Jim Soule, I live at five thirty-seven Rock Street, and the president of the Preservation Society of Fall River.
Alex Oliva, six forty-nine Alden Street, also the Preservation Society of Fall River.
Shotgun. You see that one? Get the shotgun.
Kristen Cantara, Olivera, eight ninety-eight Robinson Street, Historical Commission.
Richard Mansany, two forty-three French Street, Historic Commission.
Well, as I started to say, my perspective is simply to give you some historical background. This building was put out for proposals in twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve. The current owner bid, and Corporation or organization called the Capital Theater Association made a proposal, their idea was to make it a performing arts center. Since twenty-twelve, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twelve, the current owners have owned it, and they, I guess, didn't find any particular use for it. Now, they filed under the city's demolition ordinance or demolition permit, which I think it says it in the resolution, simply delays the demolition for six months, giving everybody, interested parties, time to speak to each other, to see if there are other viable alternatives. The only thing I wanted to make sure the committee knew was, there were other proposals made back in twenty-twelve and twenty-eleven. I think the Capital Theater Group wanted to pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars. The successful bidder is Santos Own TA, they bid five, and I don't want anybody to take this the wrong way, but since twenty-twelve, nothing's been done one way or the other with that building, either by the folks that own it or the folks that want to preserve it. So, the dialogue, which is what I understand the purpose of the resolution is, can be productive, but I just wanted the council to understand that this is not something, I don't know how to put it, that we did. This is not new, it's been around a long time, so that's really the extent of the information I have that you might need.
Okay. You know, our problem here tonight, Steve's not here, and I'm to understand that they had...
Sorry, the owners of the property, they were invited as well.
Yeah. And I understand there's supposed to be a lawyer coming down. Is that right? I don't know. And they were supposed to be here tonight, so I stopped there this morning and let them know the meeting was going to be tonight, and for some reason, they're not here. So, we eat a table it if we would like, and we can hate to get you people back up here, but to give everybody a chance to...
Can I make a quick statement?
Sure, go ahead.
So, I, I'm hesitant to bash a private developer in the city, and I'm not going to. This is a disagreement. He sounded, according to his initial purchase, he had intentions of developing it. That sounded good, and I wouldn't argue about that five thousand dollar sales because it was a good offer. But I think most people recognize that this really is a historical property, and we hate to see us losing it. And we probably can't save it. There's probably nothing we can do to convince the owners to save it. Maybe we can, but there's nothing legal we can do to stop them. But maybe what we can do is help ensure that in the future, when we sell really historically sensitive properties, that we can have some ordinances in place that will avoid that. So, I look forward to being able to sit down and talk about this again, and to be productive.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know when some properties are sold, there are conditions, if you will, that are incorporated. I was just going to ask the judge, I don't think that was the case in this particular decision. It was, okay. So, I think the council has the ability now, moving forward, to be able to put restrictions on what happens to the property once it's been purchased. The council has taken that opportunity with the sale of other properties, and I think this one, it clearly did not happen, but you do have that ability, moving forward, for anything that you sell.
It is unrestricted.
Unrestricted. So, I think to Mr. Soule's point, there's really not much on this particular property unless there continues to be an alternative use that might be acceptable to the owner. But I think moving forward, I think the council may want to just simply, I think to address your concerns, if, obviously, if there was some sort of a restriction put on the sale requiring that it be maintained, that might be sufficient. But in this particular case, that didn't happen, so...
Okay.
I think, depending on who weighs in and when, recently, when we have conveyed city property, we've put timeframes in. You have to do this by such and such, and that by such and such. I don't believe we've ever put, or have put yet, a historical restriction, but there's nothing to prevent us from putting that in a request for proposals, as I think you identified. It's knowing it in advance, as opposed to after the horse is out of the barn or the property's sold, but we can do it.
Okay. The motion, make a motion.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I think with the Historical Commission, our issue is, we've reached out to the owner, and twice he said he would come to the meeting so that we could discuss this, and both times he did not show up. And we have questions for him, which he said, he talked to our clerk and said, any questions could be addressed in the letter that he sent us. But the letter that he actually sent us, we have more questions just from the letter than anything. So, we haven't been able to get him to have the dialogue, so in order to even be able to have this discussion, that's the problem, we can't get him to talk to us.
All right, well, we'll see if we can square that away, try to get him here if he wants to come. I mean, he had an invitation. I can touch base with him tomorrow, see what happened, and we can take it from there.
And there's a time restriction here also.
Yeah.
October. The six-month demolition is up in October.
Yeah.
So...
All right. Kathy?
Yeah, so has he been apprised of what tax credits might be available? We have the H-TIP program.
We haven't, we haven't been able to, like I said, we haven't been able to get in contact with him to have him come down so that we can explain that to him. And he did, he did, if I can just read the letter that he sent so that you can, you'll know where we're at. So, the letter that he sent was, "Dear Commission Members, I write to you today in regards to the above referenced property, which is the NV Board in School. In two thousand and twelve, we purchased the property with the intent of renovating the existing abandoned NV Board in School for the purposes of either residential apartments and/or office commercial space. In two thousand and fourteen, we applied for and received a zoning variance allowing the subdivision of the parcel, leaving the existing building on one parcel to be utilized as office space and storage warehouse while creating a parking facility for our adjacent restaurant on the second parcel. We have invested well over a hundred thousand in repairs slash upgrades and have currently completed approximately eighty percent of the parking facility. Over this time, we've worked extensively with our engineer, architect, and several contractors in an attempt to develop the property with the intent of leaving the structure standing. As with many of the sold school properties in the city, the restoration slash reuse of the structures is very difficult, and the cost of such makes the projects economically unfeasible. The cost to complete the needed renovations was estimated to be approximately three-point-five million dollars. The estimated cost of demolishing the building will be approximately four hundred thousand. We are often approached by residents..." We are often approached by residents in the city regarding the project, and most request to have the building razed. Additionally, it is becoming more of a safety concern for the neighborhood the longer the building sits vacant. It is for these reasons we are requesting a permit for demolition from the City of Fall River Building Commissioner. The demolition of the property will allow for the completion of the parking facility as well as the potential of residential construction along a portion of the Whipple Street frontage. Thank you for your time and attention regarding this matter."
What's the date on that?
This was March 25. So our, where he said, you know, that it's difficult and the cost makes it economically unfeasible, there are tax credits available, and it's not economically unfeasible because we have developers in the city right now that are redeveloping schools. So, you know, we, so that's a question, we don't know where, he got the estimate of $3.5 million, and there are some other financial issues that we have questions about, but like I said, he hasn't, he hasn't come to one of the meetings to answer any of our questions.
Now, talk about one of your meetings?
Yes.
Would you want to discuss this at this table within?
Oh, we would, we would like to. We'd like to discuss it anywhere so that we can hopefully do some...
All right, well, I'm going to touch base with him tomorrow, see what happens, and we can give you, someone a call, let you know what's going on, and we can take it from there. So right now, we have a motion? Table, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we'll take it from there, okay? Thank you, Mr. Macy, Kathy. Motion, George.
Motion, George.
Yeah, this is the only one that I have. Could you email it to me? Yep. Let me just...
Motion, George.
Motion, George.
Do you want to take a picture of the letter? Oh, okay, hold on.
All in favor?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I could do that.